Order. Need a motion to return to open session.
Madam Chair, I move that we reconvene in open session and adopt certification of closed session.
Second. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries.
Certification of closed session. Whereas the Dinwiddie County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas paragraph 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dinwiddie County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only such business matters as were identified in the me- meet motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Jay Sneff Jr., District One.
I certify.
Betty Haney, District Two.
I certify.
Barbara Pittman, District Three.
I certify.
Mary Benjamin, District Four.
I certify.
Sherlin Merritt, District Five.
I certify.
Madam Chair, all certified. One student representative, Grace Jones.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our friends from Midway to help us participate in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. We need to adopt the agenda. Are there any amendments?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Personnel list.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the personnel list as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Student Matters. Okay, so let's, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hang on, let him abstain first.
I abstain.
Everyone else, aye. The motion carries with one abstention. Student Matters.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the original recommendation and long-term suspend student number LT-03/23-2 and long-term suspend the student finding that the student poses a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of others.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Need to abstain?
I abstain on the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and long-term suspend student number LT-04/23-1, finding that the student poses a threat to the safe, health, safety, and welfare of others.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
I'll be abstaining also on that vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Four votes and one abstention. And one more.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and long-term suspend student LT-04/23-2 until the end of the school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
I'll be abstaining as well on this vote.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four and one abstention. And expenditure reports.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the expenditure reports as presented.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And the minutes from March 14th and 28th.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of March 14th and March 28th, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion carries. Now we come to recognitions and Midway Elementary. You might fall off, so please return.
I'm very pleased tonight that we can show you some of the good stuff we're doing at Midway. As my staff will tell you, and Ms. Pittman and Dr. Weston, I think it's on.
It's coming.
Now, there we go. All right, sounds better. They'll tell you that creativity is not one of my strong points, but one thing I do pride myself on is being able to get good people in the right spot. And that's what, that's what I did with our teachers that are here with us to put this together for you. And we like to think that everything we do at Midway is student-centered. So this presentation is going to be student-centered also. So I'm going to have Weston Athie, he's one of our fifth graders, is going to take over.
Good evening. The ancient Chinese philosopher Confucius once said, "I hear and I forget, I see and I remember, I do and I understand." Midway Elementary provides experiences for students to hear, see, and do to ensure our learning will be unforgettable moments of understanding. This year, the students at Midway Elementary have enjoyed learning through classroom transformations, plays, hands-on science experiments, interact math activities, field trips, and guest readers, among many other engaging activities. To showcase just a few concepts we've learned through these experiences, we'd like to challenge you in a fun game against our Midway students. Are you smarter than a fifth grader? Oh, Midwayer, sorry. Grab your whiteboards and markers and let's begin. Our first question this evening comes from kindergarten. The first question is, what do you call people that have jobs in our community?
I would say employed.
Please reveal to us your answers.
It could be both.
Teachers.
Workers.
Let's hear from our kindergarteners to see what they learned about community helpers. Community helpers, community helpers. What do you do?
We work for you. That's what we do.
Thank you, kindergarten. Our next question comes from first grade. Board members, please erase your boards. Your first question is, what spelling pattern do these words all have in common? Card, shark, and bar.
Bar.
Do we show our patterns?
Pirate.
Please show us your answers. Let's hear from our first graders to learn about.
R. Learns, R makes the R sound like a pirate. We acted like pirates by using a spyglass to read AR words around the room. We're an AR pirate, spying and playing AR videos.
Very good.
Very good.
Our next question comes from second grade. I am a famous American who studied plants and science. I developed hundreds of uses for peanuts, sweet potatoes, and soybeans. I was a teacher. Who am I?
I have no idea.
Will you please show us your answer? I'll have our second grade student tell us all about George Washington Carter and their unit of famous Americans. Thank you, Mercy. Next up is a question from third grade. What is the difference between a biography and an autobiography? Regan, will you tell us about your, their study on different genres in reading?
As you can see, third grade has been doing a lot of learning.
Thank you, Regan. Our next question comes from fourth grade, and it's a tricky one. In what year was Jamestown founded and what was the name of the three ships? Once you already show us the answers.
This is in Columbus's right. Oh, seven.
Either it's oh seven or oh nine, I'm not sure.
It's oh seven.
Are we right?
Sixteen oh seven. Did we give Columbus's ships or?
Columbus's ships were different.
I don't know.
She's getting ready to tell us, right?
You two can be the superintendent.
I'm sorry you don't know that, but Carol will, Carol will tell you about her study of Jamestown. Thank you, Carol. Our next question comes from fifth grade. What do convergent, divergent, and transform boundaries cause?
What?
I would say.
Say it again.
What do transform, convergent, and divergent boundaries cause?
What do they cause? Earthquakes?
Once you already show us your answers.
Converging means together, diverged means to turn around, and transforming to change.
She put they cause change.
I'll turn it over to Camden to explain about plate tectonics to you in an experiment that was conducted in class.
In class, we had a plate with icing and we put the graham crackers. But today, I'm just going to show you with the graham crackers. So transform, the plate tectonics rub against each other causing earthquakes.
That's what.
For divergent, they go apart, causing volcanoes. And then for convergent, they come together and cause mountains or trenches.
And now for a final question. We are going to test you, we are going to test your knowledge of Midway's history. What was Midway's first mascot?
It's a marauder, but.
I have no idea. I don't know what a marauder does, so I don't know.
Marada.
Marider.
Yeah. Was before that, or something different before marana?
We're working collaboratively. It should be a pirate.
Midway's mascots have changed over the years. Midway's first mascot were known for the tires. Thank you for your time in playing, "Are you smarter than a Midwayer?"
I love that.
Thank you all very much. I hope you, I hope you learned something tonight.
Never to challenge Midway students.
Yes. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much, Midway. We appreciate your efforts and very entertaining.
Thank you.
And now we have other recognitions. We'll do all the recognitions first and then we'll give you a few minutes to clear the area for people who need to go home and do homework and so forth.
Thank you.
At this point, we're looking at regional art winners.
Yes. But first, we have a couple of announcements.
Okay, thank you.
This month, the Communications Department would like to wish a happy birthday to all employees celebrating a birthday during the month of April. This month, we would also like to spotlight our DCPS Assistant Principals, as last week was Principal, Assistant Principal Appreciation Week. They are Raymond Stavall, Frankie Crowder, Georgette Meekins, Danielle Hawkins, Richard Spitz, Brad Atkins, Melissa Brunel, Ryan Gregory, Sharon Gibbs, and Tori Walker. Thank you for supporting your building principles and being there for our students. Also, we wanted to bring to your attention that on April 5th, it was National Paraprofessionals Day. Later this month, we will have National Library Week, which will be April 23rd through the 29th, and Admin Professionals Day, which will be April 26th. Next up is our regional art winners. DCPS attended the 2023 V SBA Spring Southside Region Networking Forum at Prince George on March 9th. Our school system had the opportunity to showcase several students' artwork for the judging during this event. I am happy to share the following students' artwork was selected to represent our school district. Ms. Bonnie, can you grab those bags underneath your desk? Which is? All right. Tatiana Robinson, second grader from Sutherland Elementary. All right. Her artwork is entitled "Kitten Land" and you'll see it out.
Well, it's in the back, back there.
All right. Grace Rials, sixth grader from Dinwiddie Middle School. Her artwork is entitled "Stars." And lastly, Bridget Bullyard, twelfth grader from Dinwiddie High School with Canid Creation. All right, let's see. Our SVRTC Technology Awards. Dinwiddie County Public Schools is a part of Southside Virginia Regional Technology Consortium. The mission of SVRTC is to assist members with coordinating the acquisition and effective integration of valuable, up-to-date, and emerging technologies. Valuable training for K through 12 students, staff, and other citizens in our communities to enhance learning at all levels and encourage economic development in Southside Virginia. Each year, SVRTC hosts an annual awards banquet and the following people were selected locally and then recognized on March 22nd at the banquet held at Longwood University. First up, in the category of instructional technology support, none other than Amanda Boo. All right. Ms. Boo is the Innovation Specialist at Dinwiddie Middle School. In her first year in the role, she has taken on unbelievable challenges, which she has done with professionalism, skill, and precision. Ms. Boo assists teachers by providing ongoing training, support, and creative suggestions for using technology with their students. When teachers experience difficulty with technology, she will quickly assist them so they can return back to instruction. Ms. Boo is a team player that communicates and work with all of her stakeholders to ensure that staff and students work towards excellence. To top it off, Ms. Boo is an amazing person. Dinwiddie Middle School could not ask for a better support person. Congratulations. In the category of Technology Teacher Award, none other than Ms. Kristen Boulis. Ms. Boulis is a teacher at Dinwiddie High School that not only teaches in the area of science, but recently she branched out into the CTE world, teaching programming and database design and management. She also leads the robotics team at Dinwiddie High School, and Ms. Boulis uses a variety of technology in her lessons to increase student engagement and success. Her use of technology range from innovative labs to technology-enhanced lessons and study materials. She will gladly lend a helping hand to any of her coworkers with technology suggestions and how to implement them in the classroom. Ms. Boulis is also one of the track and field coaches for Dinwiddie County Public Schools. Congratulations. In the area of technology support, we have none other than Ms. Darice Nguyen. Ms. Nguyen supports a vast number of technologies at DCPS. She provides IT support for two sites, Dinwiddie Elementary School and the Transportation Department. Additionally, Ms. Nguyen manages the integrative IP phone systems for all schools, as well as the assets and inventory systems for the division. She takes great joy in making sure the equipment, such as the desktop, the laptops, our Chromebooks, iPads, and access points are working correctly. Ms. Nguyen also has a unique talent for making people feel comfortable with technology. One of her best skills is the ability to transfer knowledge to other staff members. Her technical knowledge and willingness to help makes Ms. Nguyen an excellent technical support person and valued member of our technology team. Congratulations. The SVRTC School Division Leadership Award is a competitive award which recognizes an SVRTC school division that advances technology in education settings. Some of the criteria for this award includes: The administrator and the school board have worked together to create environments, establish policies, and to support improved student achievement. Also, technology integration must have improved instructional design or instructional strategies to address things such as closing the achievement gap, online learning, virtual school, collaborative learning with the support of English as a second language, as well as students with disability, ensuring access to technology for all educators in the division, as well as, lastly, ensuring the division is addressing the needs of the students in a competitive, global society. Tonight, I am excited to announce that Dinwiddie County Public Schools was awarded the SVRTC School Division Leadership Award. Will Mr. Tim Ampe and his team please stand? Mr. Ampe, please come forward to accept your award.
Congratulations. All right, and we'll get pictures after.
At this time, I would like Mr. Roberts to please come forward as we recognize one more honoree.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Virginia Association for Elementary School
And on behalf of the Virginia Association for Elementary School Principals, I'm standing here to do an introduction. But to the board, we'd like to thank you for this space and time to be able to present one of our very own members of the Dinwiddie County School System with a special award. The Virginia Association for Elementary School Principals is a statewide organization. We also belong to the national organization, which is the National Association for Elementary School Principals. I am honored to present to you this afternoon, Ms. Krista Arnold, our Executive Director, who will make a presentation to one of our very own principals or directors here in our school system. Ms. Arnold.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I have the opportunity to travel around the state and to attend school board meetings all over the state. And it sure seems to me Dinwiddie's doing something right. Um, your focus on children and community is evident, and you should be proud of yourselves. It's not easy in this environment, so it's a pleasure to be here today.
Thank you so much.
So, I am fortunate where we have 1,000 members, and we are elementary and up to middle school principals and assistant principals. And I'm here to recognize one of your own for their contribution in professional development. Chuck Moss, it's you. Mr. Moss's contribution, you might hear him say, "Kids deserve it." Well, Mr. Moss, you deserve it. And your contribution and your growth for elementary and middle school principals around the state of Virginia wanted you to know that we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this point, um, we're gonna take like a three to five-minute break, just long enough for the people that... Two things. We're gonna let the board make comments before you leave, because sometimes we like to make comments about what we saw, and then you guys are gone. So, we're gonna start on Mr. Schneff's end for any comments that you have, and then we will also recognize the parents that are here. Mr. Schneff, go right ahead.
Midway, you did an awesome job. I learned I wasn't smarter than a kindergartner. Thanks. Um, y'all really did a good job. Proud of y'all's school, definitely. Something to be proud of. Lot of heritage and history there. Um, art winners and SVRTC winners, congratulations. Well deserved.
Okay. Same thing. The children at Midway were wonderful. Thank y'all so much for all you did. And yeah, I don't think any of us were smarter than the fifth graders. But really, thank you. We enjoyed it. It was fun, and it was so wonderful to see all of the work that these kids put out today for us. And for all the other winners, Chuck Moss, congratulations. Ms. Boulis, congratulations. And all of the others, thank y'all very, very much for all you do for this county.
Mary?
Good evening, everybody. Good, yes, almost evening now. And I'm so happy to see each of you here this afternoon. Uh, parents, thank you for allowing us to work with your children every day. Teachers, thank you for coming every day to do the job that you do. And to our administrators, thank you for keeping things in order, you keep it in line. And to all the winners who have worked hard and were able to receive an award, we appreciate you. Because when you do your work and you get an award, as many of you know me, you know, I love Dinwiddie, so you make Dinwiddie proud when you get those awards, so I appreciate you for that. And just thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep doing what you're doing, because we are only looking for better and we're going higher.
I, I'm gonna say everything that they just said, but I especially want to thank Midway. I thoroughly enjoy you all. And I wanna thank the parents and the teachers. Keep our students learning. You're doing an awesome job, and I'm looking forward for the next time. Thank you so much.
I think, um, we're very thankful for the students that are here, and especially thankful for the parents that brought them, and also the teachers that are working with them. The creativity really is a, makes learning more fun and learning more complete. I'm really proud of our tech awards. In this day and age, technology is around us and between us, and you can't operate without it. So, it's exciting that we are being recognized for the job that we do in that area. Um, at this time, the parents and teachers that are with this group here, would you please stand? Thank you very much. Thank you, and please be seated, and Dr. Wester will make the comment.
I just wanna say that when my children were growing up, one of the things I used to tell them was to always surround yourself with people that make you a better person. And I am not smarter than anybody that was recognized tonight, so it's an honor to be, work alongside of you every single day. So, thank you all so much. That might rub off on me, that's right.
Grace, Grace, would you like to make a comment?
I just wanna say I'm proud of everyone, and it's amazing to see my home elementary school here, seeing all the teachers and all the students. It's amazing. I'm proud of each and every one of you. So, thank you for coming today.
And now, we will take just a brief, um, intermission. If you would love to stay and see the other business, we welcome you. But if you have other things that you need to do, homework or dinner, go right ahead and exit. Thank you.
I like it.
I know, it holds it well.
Nice though.
You would like to call the meeting back to order, please? Thank you very much. At this point, we're looking at board matters. Would be Mr. Torterese.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I can't remember if I usually use a microphone or not. All right, I'm here for a couple approvals for field trips. The first one we're going to talk about is the one who submitted March 28th, the National FFA Convention. The National FFA Convention is going to be held in Indianapolis, Indiana, November 1st through 4th. 31st of October is going to be a travel day. It's so the members could compete, or they're for the ones that advance from the state level to the national level. They have workshops and different sessions to participate for college prep and career expo. We actually have two former students who are receiving their American FFA degrees this year. The convention is an overnight trip, therefore board approval is required. Students will pay for their trip, which is estimated to be around $900. They will travel by plane. And we recommend that you approve the trip. If we have any questions, we do have Mr. Davis here. Ms. Bishop was here. She's still here to answer any questions.
Are there questions about the trip to the board? We have an estimate on how many people we're sending.
We're waiting to find out if the rooms will hold four or six students in each room. Our guess is 12 students. But we're waiting on the final hotel numbers.
And is the, just for my, I'm just curious, the 900 is before or after we do any fundraising?
Before fundraising.
Okay.
Normally, we're able to get it down to 200 or 300 by the time all fundraisers are done. Some less than that.
Okay.
And are we doing this one for the state or for the national, or both together?
That was the national. The state convention's the next one I have.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the request. We have a motion. We need a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the state convention?
The state convention, yes. The FFA State Convention is held annually at Virginia Tech. This year, the dates are the 20th and 23rd of June. They, again, it allows them to compete and attend workshops throughout the event, participate in business meetings for a state association. We plan to have several teams and individuals competing, and all members will serve on the Courtesy Corps. The Courtesy Corps assists in all aspects of the convention to ensure things run smoothly. They're available to assist with visitors, help with seating, and work backstage. Students are going to travel to Virginia Tech via school bus. They will stay on the Virginia Tech campus for three nights and eat meals in the dining hall during their stay. The cost of the convention is approximately $350, with fundraisers being held to offset the cost of the convention for the students. Mr. Davis is going to drive the bus for this trip, and he is also one of the FFA sponsors and will stay out there with them. We have approximately 12 to 14 students going on this trip as well.
Are there questions about the state convention?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the request for this FFA State Convention.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion does carry.
The last trip is the high school football team going to camp at Farum for three nights. We've attended the Farum camp for the last five years. It gives us a chance to compete against different teams. We're actually able to put our helmets and shoulder pads on and do things that way instead of just, you know, in t-shirts and shorts. So it helps them really prepare for the upcoming season. They'll need a bus driver to drop them off on Monday, the 26th, in return to pick them up on the 29th. It is just, it's something that they've been doing and really helps them prepare for their season.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the football field trip.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion does carry.
Quickly, your little token that you've received, it's just a token of appreciation from the athletic department and the football team, is to commemorate the state championship run this year. We are having our ring ceremony this Friday at 1:30. If anybody would like to come, you're more than welcome. Be about 1:30 to about 2 o'clock over at the high school in the auditorium.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Carl Perkins Grant. Ms. Wolford. Good evening. How are you?
So as you may already know, V S B A put out a nice announcement about April being workforce readiness month. So it's timely that we're talking about our Carl Perkins Plan. And tomorrow morning, we'll actually celebrate with an appreciation breakfast for our employers and supporters of our CTE programming. So we're looking forward to that. I tried to create a summary for you instead of you having to review that lengthy grant application, but I just wanted to quickly hit some of those highlights. All of our goals and initiatives are centered around our Conference of Needs Assessment that was conducted last year. It's done every other year, and I'm pleased that this year we did meet or exceed all of our requirements for those standards based on our academic performance report from our class of 2022. So we are looking to expand some of our new CTE courses, and some of these will replace existing courses. So you can see from the summary, floriculture, which combines the concepts of horticulture and floral design. Our students expressed interest in floral design skills. We'll be replacing the horticulture class. And then turf brass management will be expanded to be landscaping, which will encompass not only the turf, but also care of the landscape and grass. We'll also be prioritizing professional development. Our counselors, teachers, and administration will continue to utilize the major clarity data to ensure students have their course sequence and that their pathway is student-centered and so that they can go to the, with their counselors with that plan in mind hopefully. And so I highlighted some of those things there. I did also point out that the Perkins Grant requires that 60% of our expenditures are on what they call required expenses, which are different than the permissible, and so I kind of broke those differences there. The required pieces are the ones that we can allocate at least 60% of our funds to include those professional development, targeting special population students, supporting our regional CTE center, which is Rewani. I also, we had a new program for parents and students this year with Thriving Gen Night, so I anticipate that continuing and growing. Focused on career exposure, so we do a lot to support the equipment, software, and textbook needs of specific CTE courses to ensure that, as well as the CTE programming. And as soon as all the pieces are in place, I'll be coming to share with you about our Go Tech grant that we're applying for that would expand a lot of the equipment and simulations and different hands-on things, equipment for our middle school students that are in career CTE classes. So we're revamping how the experiences look for our middle school students to ensure that they have exposure to all of the career clusters. And another big project we're looking at this year is reglazing the high school greenhouse. So that has to happen about every 10 to 15 years with that polycarbon covering to make sure that we have the optimal growth in our greenhouse. Our permissible would be our CTE testing. We have to use all of our state funding first, and then we can roll into our federal funding with Perkins. We also support, you've heard, our FFA is planning to go to state and national convention. Our DEF has been very active, FBLA has been active. And so we do always allocate some of our Perkins funds to support those students on those trips to make sure that we can offset some of that cost. This coming year will also have an added expense that we won't hopefully have in the future, and that is making sure that our culinary program is accredited through the American Culinary Federation. And so that is a bit costly to make sure that we can have the inspectors come in and do a two-day site visit and inspect our labs and make sure that the students, that they're learning is on the national standard. I am just seeking your approval for the initial Perkins application. We have not received our funding allocation for this coming year. We did see an increase this past year, so I'm hoping that that is sustained or maybe possibly increased even more. But I won't know that until the state releases that.
And you, we apply for X amount, and then they adjust it?
We're just given what we're given.
Oh, you know, it's a random?
Then I have to take our priorities.
And then reapply them?
How we best see to align with that conference to the assessment. So I'm just sharing those priorities, and that's how our funds will be allocated and distributed once we know those accounts are totals. So when I upload it, it is with what we were given this year, and then it will be amended.
Any questions from Ms. Wolford? If not, we need a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Carl Perkins Plan so far.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much for your hard work. Do business. Do we have any? Or do not? Superintendent matter?
Yes, we have this branch here that's going to provide us with an update relative to the support staff grievances process.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To my board members and our superintendents, I have for use of updates that I would like you to review for a first reading in regards to our support staff grievances policy. We generally accept the policies that are given to us from the Virginia School Board Association. However, we do have the ability to come to you and request that we make modifications to the policy and that it be accepted into our policy that is posted on board docs. Overall, the changes that I am proposing would give us some flexibility for us to be able to address employee staff grievance issues in regards to those employees that are considered classified staff. So those that do not have the eligibility to be on a continuing contract. So what I've done in the document is that I've made comments in the margin as far as what changes would be different as far as to what is in the existing policy. Some of them are minor, but the main changes that are made are in regards to our procedural process. But just for the sake of full transparency, I will go through each of the comments that I've highlighted within the document that you have before you. In the first paragraph of the grievances policy, there is just some wording that's changed that says that it's the school board's exclusive final authority over the employment and supervision of personnel as it pertains to this policy. On page two is where we start the procedure process for classified staff. And the first recommendation is that we change procedure number one, which would allow the written notice of a proposed action towards an employee. It would allow that to be done by the supervisor or an appropriate administrator. The former policy mentioned that it would be building administrator or department head. However, we understand that in some instances, an employee may receive oversight or supervision from multiple levels or multiple people. So this gives us some flexibility as far as the person that can deliver that initial message to the employee. It also removes the need for that employee to meet with human resources right away, and it moves them into the second part of procedure one, which allows them to go ahead and request a hearing with the superintendent or her designee within five days of that notice. So we would just assume that if we have the request from that employee in five days, then we would act, you know, based on the recommendation we had given. Following that in procedure two, the superintendent or their-
Designee would be able to hold the hearing within 10 working days. In the original policy, it was 15 working days. This allows us the ability to be able to schedule the meetings more expediently and more timely. In regards to number four in the procedures, we also would like to reduce the timeframe for us to provide a written decision to the employee. So rather than it being 10 days, it would give us five days. And once again, that allows us to be able to respond promptly to the employee. In regards to that decision, if the superintendent or her designee accepts the recommendation, then they would be able to notify that employee of the effective date of that decision immediately. However, if the employee would like to appeal that decision, they do still have provisions to do so in this policy, depending on who initiates the first hearing. So for example, if the designee is the person that oversees the first hearing, that second hearing would go to the superintendent for a second level review. And in some instances, the superintendent may decide that the school board needs to hear the employee's case. If that's the case, then the superintendent has the authority to be able to initiate that hearing with the school board. All in all, this allows us to be able to respond more promptly to the employee. The former policy had a provision where we would have to go through a process of electing and appointing a hearing officer. And we have found that in some instances, that hearing officer may have been too far removed from the daily ins and outs of a school system. And we would just like to be able to provide an opportunity where we have someone that would have more of a firsthand knowledge of what has been going on as far as the inner workings of the school division and can respond a bit more accurately and promptly in those instances. So that is the summation of the changes I recommend. And so I did want you to have a chance to be able to review it before I ask for your action. So today, it is just a first reading. Thank you.
Do you have questions about this new procedures? No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's have citizen comments. We have one person that has signed up, Mr. Chris Billmeyer. And would you come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Billmeyer. I live at 5916 Cox Road, Wilsons, Virginia, 23894. First off, I want to thank y'all for your service and dedication to Dinwiddie County Schools. It's very important what y'all do here, and it's noticed by many, but not by all. And I do want to state that I am here, you know, letting you know that I do appreciate what you do. I guess you could say I'm going to be a little bit of a reality check. I watched everything that went on earlier in the meeting, and it was great. What kids and y'all do in the county, what you do for kids in the county is great. The reality check is, we're still failing. And I'm not up here just talking about anything that everybody's not aware of. But I'm up here as a parent. I also want you to know on a standpoint of other things that I do. I also sit on the CTE Advisory Council. I also work with the Workforce Readiness Development Program. And I'm also the FFA alumni president. I bring this up because I want you to hear what not only a parent, but a business person and somebody in the community is seeing. My specific concerns are the middle school and what we are seeing in our behavior of the children in the middle school. I have two daughters, one in eighth and one in sixth grade. So I believe that gives me a pretty good look into what they see every single day. I don't think I'm saying anything that you're not aware of. But we have to do a better job of dealing with the problems that the students are causing. Our children are not getting the education that they need because of disruption in the classroom. Now, if I had a perfect answer, I'd come to you with the perfect answer. I don't think anybody has the perfect answer, but I do know we're not doing enough. I'm going to speak of a couple of specific things that I know of. This is not hearsay. This has come directly from a parent or a student, and it concerns me. So first of all, one student was dealing with a lot of bullying in the hallway between classes. The course of action to deal with it was told to the student to, "You can go between classes after everybody else transfers to their class." We're not helping the problem. We're only making it okay to bully. Secondly, I know of a student that had completed a test or a quiz, taken their paper, put it in the completion basket. Another student got up, took the paper, copied all the answers, then handed it to another student. And I could be wrong about what went on behind this, but I was told the only thing they had, that they were told, was to retake the test. Now, when I was in school, that's a zero. Now, I have an issue with that. Now, granted, that was one student, but you're setting the example for everybody. On another particular instance, my daughter was in class and watched Dr. Weston remove a student from a classroom for disruption. This particular classroom is known for problems. Now, Dr. Weston is superintendent. Her job is not to be a mediator in a classroom. Why was there not other people involved? You know, we shouldn't have had to wait for Dr. Weston to remove a student, which is a known problem in the classroom, okay? I'm trying to go over my notes, and I apologize if it takes me a minute to get through them all. With, that was with my oldest daughter. With my youngest daughter, I had, we had problems with a teacher not communicating very well. We had a lot of questions on grades and why they were what they were. We didn't get emails back. We actually had to involve administration to get some resolve on this. In the end, the teacher was actually removed from the classroom due to the fact that, I just got to be blunt, you can't do, you weren't doing your job, okay? That teacher is now co-teaching in the classroom that my eighth-grade daughter was in. We can't handle this classroom, but yet we're going to put them in a classroom where there's already known problems and think that they're going to handle that any better? Folks, we got to wake up. We can't solve problems by moving them. That's not how you solve a problem. You fix the problem. You don't just move the problem. I'm all ears, and I'm willing to help. I think by what I stated early, that I'm not afraid to help out Dinwiddie County Schools. I have sat on some of these advisory councils for a while now. I do that because, just like y'all, I believe in Dinwiddie County Schools. As an employer, and I have employed several people out of Dinwiddie County High School when they graduated through the Workforce Development Program. Great program, awesome. But what I see coming scares me to death. How is a business going to survive when what we're producing isn't helping anything? The easy thing is kick them out of school. I was first one, I've said it many times, get rid of them. They got to go. I understand accreditation is based on, a lot of times, on attendance. Now, maybe removing them from the school is not the right answer, but we have to come up with a better answer. I've talked to several parents who their children strictly can't concentrate in class. They just can't concentrate. My own daughter, who knows, do not use your phone at school unless it's an emergency. I'm very, and she actually has to use her, she has a medical device on her phone, so she actually has to use it some. She came to me one night and said, "Dad, I need you to hear this." She actually recorded her classroom environment. It was so loud, she couldn't even pay attention to the teacher. She says like this every day, "Dad, we have contemplated pulling our students out and homeschooling." Now, that's a failure on Dinwiddie County Schools because now one of us, being mainly my wife, is going to have to be at home to make sure schooling is done. I don't like the idea of homeschooling personally. I think you lose touch of society. I'm not saying it's not for some. It's not for everybody. I think it's very important for our students to have one-on-one education. I didn't like shutting down for COVID, but we had to do what we had to do. I just feel like we can do a lot better. And y'all need to understand, not only parents, but businesses in Dinwiddie County are paying attention. And that is not good when you start hearing about the businesses paying attention because then there's concern about what we are producing. And we can do a lot better. And quite honestly, we can give accolades to everybody, but if we're not putting forth enough effort to give everybody that equal chance, then we're failing. I always believe that if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I suggest all of us become part of the solution. It would mean a lot to parents in Dinwiddie County. Thank y'all for your time. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Y'all, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your effort of coming forward, Mr. Billmeyer. We take seriously the issues that we have at hand. Do we have any other board member comments for, towards the end of the meeting?
I've just got one thing to say, well, a couple of this. Thank you, Ms. Billmeyer, for being an advocate for your parent, for your students and your kids. Wish we had more parents that would do that. I love to have, I always say I love to have a room full of parents. I mean, I like to hear what's going on in their homes and what we can help maybe take care of. Also, I guess just to let the general public know, I would not be seeking reelection. I think, you know, this is best served by a parent. My son will be graduating next year, so during most of the term, I won't have a quiet, quote-unquote, dog in the fight. So if you do know anybody that is, as a parent and a school assistant would like to run, you know, try to persuade them to come and stand up from a student's perspective and a parent's perspective. Thank you.
Ms. Benjamin, any thoughts?
Thank you for coming out and sharing with us. And as Mr. Steph has said, we wish we had a room full to come because we believe all the time that the answers are out there. They're your children. And if we came in, we worked together, we can actually be that solution that we're all looking for. Thank you.
Quick to that comment, just a thought. If there was any way to move the meeting later in the day when parents can be involved? I mean, I personally run a small business, and all of my crews get off at 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock. My phone has rang numerous times in here. It's hard to be involved when we are at work. And so just something to think about in the future.
We have had, we have contemplated that. In years past, we did have meetings, closed meetings at 5:00 and open ones at 7:00. We started the process of having the schools come and the students participate, which is also a good thing, but time was better earlier for that. But, you know, it's a point well taken that we need to be able to have both things go on, whether we alternate times or... Quite frankly, we didn't have as much participation when we were doing them at 7:00. However, doing them at 4:00 eliminates some people that are working too. Comments?
The only thing I just wanted to say, and I would also thank you, and I appreciate your comments. And like you, I do want to be part of the solution, and I think all of us up here agree. So what you, your statements are very important, and I'm sure we'll take heed.
Thank you, Mr. Billmeyer, for coming forward. And it is our wish that we can address the problems that we have, make it better each day. So, we always try to celebrate what we're doing well, which we did a lot of that tonight, but we also need to look at what we're not doing well. So, appreciate that. Dr. Weston?
Thank you, Mr. Bill Meyer. We've had conversations previously. I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight. And I do believe that we can either make excuses or we find a way. And I am a firm believer that we can find a way to fix the problems that we have going on there, the challenges that we have going on there, and it will require all of us to do that. And I too am going to be part of that solution. So, thank you for that.
I just wanted to say that thank you for coming out. It's good to hear about other students' perspectives, because I try to listen to my peers too. And I do listen to my peers, so it's good to hear other opinions. So, thank you. But one more step, and we're at graduation. I know as a senior, I'm kind of shaking in my boots, so... But yeah, I'm proud of everyone, all the accomplishments. So, thank you for coming out today, guys.
Do you have anything else? Okay. We will be closing the regular school board meeting. We do have a public hearing at 5:30. And we'll be looking at the proposed budget and having public comments on that. So, we will have a motion for a pause. Motion to adjourn, and then we will reopen the public hearings.
Ma'am Chair, I'm moved that we adjourned the meeting.
A second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And hopefully, some of you will be here for the 5:30 meeting. Thank you. Say to your starting position. Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. We would like to call this meeting to order, and this is a public hearing. So, we would like to have a roll call for the purposes of the minutes.
Jay Smith?
Present.
District one, Betty Hain, District two.
Present.
Ivo Pittman, District three.
Present.
Ray Benjamin, District four.
Present.
Shirley Merritt, District five.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Weston will be presiding over this public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Since the last time that I stood before you to bring you the proposed budget, we have made some changes to it. But I did want to kind of start with just providing you with, I guess, a disclaimer, if you will. But I did want to kind of start with just providing you with, I guess, a disclaimer, if you will. Right now Richmond has not finalized numbers for us. We're still waiting for those to come out. And so we are still basing this budget on the governor's proposed budget that came out in December. So we hope by the end of the month, we will have those final figures. We did, however, the team and I did spend some time. We went to every one of our schools to present the budget to garner feedback from our teachers and our staff based on the original proposed budget. As you will remember, we were requesting $2.8 million from the county. What you're going to see this evening is we took some of that information and that feedback to heart and we've made some adjustments to the proposed budget. And that's what we're going to be bringing you this evening as well as the budgets or the funds for all the other funds, like for federal funds and the like. Christie's also here with me this evening and can provide further information if you need that from her as well as well as the other chiefs. I do believe that there is, Denwiddie is a very special place. And I do believe that families want to bring their children to Denwiddie schools because they do believe that they will receive an excellent education here. And I think the fact that we employ about 40% of our, 40% of our staff at either graduated from Denwiddie County Public Schools or they married somebody that graduated from Denwiddie County's Public Schools do believe in the school system. I believe you buy your, your house where you buy your education. And, and I want that to continue to be true here in this county. Last year when we started this school year, we challenged one another to know every student by name, strength, and need. And when we put this budget together, we said that we were going to build a needs-based budget. And that's exactly what you're going to see this evening. This budget is really based on three things. It's based on people. How do we retain the people that we have? And how do we recruit other people that are high performing and add value to our organization? And how can we also be competitive? It's a competitive staffing market, especially in the private and the public sectors. It's also built on services. We're seeing an increase in our service levels and costs and our program, excuse me, and cost are rising, so you're going to see that as well. And we are also expanding supports and programs for our young people. And then finally, as with all things mandates coming from the Virginia Department of Education, the United States Department of Education, and through the Virginia Code. And a lot of those mandates come to us with no funding attached to them. Much of our funding does come from enrollment. So just to give you a sense of where we are currently relative to enrollment. As you can see prior to the pandemic, we were, you know, doing pretty well and maintaining, maintaining. But once the pandemic hit, we did see a big decrease in our enrollment. But we are seeing that, that number that you see there in the blue was the fall membership as of September 30th. We just did a March 30th count, so we expect to see that very soon. But we do anticipate in the numbers we're looking at right now, the preliminary numbers do show that we're seeing an enrollment increase. We are also seeing an increase in the enrollment of our English learners. That number was as of January of this year, 103. That number is greater even now. Every day I think Ms. Ms. Brooks is enrolling more and more students here. And I will tell you that of that hundred, probably around 120 or so. 126, you see, she's always got the, the number was more than 126. We currently only have three EL teachers that are teaching 126 students. And many of the students that are moving to Denwiddie County are students that are at levels one and two. And these are students that have no English whatsoever. Here's our enrollment of our exceptional education students. As you can see, once again, in 2020 and 2021, we did see those numbers decrease. But we are seeing the special education population increase. It is higher than 624 currently. And currently we do have 57 special education teachers, which sounds like that's a lot of teachers for 624. But when you're talking about 624, 650 kids, these young people all have a varied, varied needs. So you can have 20 young people on your caseload, but they all need very different things. And they're in different, on different schedules and the like. So there's just a lot of demands in the area of special education. One of the things I just wanted to say about that, why these things are important is with the EL, one of the interesting information that Ms. Brooks shared with me is that we have 11 languages now that are spoken in our schools. And that's really interesting to me because, you know, the Denwiddie of 15 or 20 years ago, that wasn't the case. This year I know we had a student from Egypt. So we, you know, we've just, it's just becoming a very different, a different, very diverse student population. I think that when you're thinking about how do you meet the needs of the student, you have to think about, think about the future and then think about, you know, who are the kids that are coming to us. But I thought that was very interesting that we have 11 languages that are now served. Just some points of pride, I do, there are some things to be a lot, very proud of. I am very proud of, you know, the things that we have been able to accomplish. There's still much more to accomplish, you know? And I think that, you know, with these, with these accomplishments, it is truly a team effort. And, you know, I'm very fortunate to be able to work with a lot of very smart people who have done this work. Some of the things I'm very, very, especially about excellence, that our schools are credited without conditions. We did have the highest graduation rate in the region. We did a lot of things differently at the high school to make that happen. The excellence in, excellence in workforce readiness. We were a school division of innovation, the Blue Ribbon School. There's many more of those, many more accolades there as well. But I just, you know, I just think that we also need to, you know, temper that, that we always, these are great things for us to accomplish, but then what's next? And I think I want us to always be focused on the future and thinking about, you know, this is great, but what, what can we do next? And how can we even make our schools even better places to, to be and to work in? So this budget is a needs-based budget. And it's really, here are the things that you're going to hear more about, about retaining and recruiting a high-quality workforce, about meeting the state and federal requirements and guidelines, meeting the needs of our students and our community expectations, addressing program and enrollment changes, serving our diverse community, and aligning the staff with student and school needs. All right, so one of the things when it comes to funding is the State Department looks at your locality's ability to pay. And so what they do is they come up with this local composite index. And there's a lot of things that go into that figure. And you can see where Denwiddie is. And these are some of the surrounding communities. And so, for example, so the higher, the higher number that you see there, that's the locality's greater ability to pay. Denwiddie right now isn't a really, we're at the lower end of how much money our locality is providing us. But, or excuse me, how much our locality is providing us. But we're paying about 12, 12 and a half thousand dollars per student right now. And you can see with some of the other localities, they're getting more money per student like Hopewell, Notaway, Amelia, Colonial Heights, Brunswick. Now, some of those have a higher ability to pay, like, you know, but look at Chesterfield, look at Prince George. I thought for me, it was interesting to look at Prince George when, for me, that their, their number is very, their, their local composite index is very comparable to ours. And yet the difference between what we are receiving per student or what we pay per student and what they are is not very much, right? So what you'd like to see is that number to be a little bit higher so that we are funding our students at a higher rate. All right, just to give you a sense, you know, we receive our money from various locations. We receive it from a locality, we receive it from the state, we receive it from federal, and then there's some other small areas where we receive revenue. Just wanted to provide you with a sense of the county, of the budget support that the county has provided us over the past three years. In 2021, they were, provided us a zero increase in our local transfer. In 2022, they provided us $507,000. That money was earmarked for us to do the second phase of our compensation study and also to raise the teacher base salary and also to provide increases for teachers. And then last year, that $300,000 was primarily for teacher increases. They do like to support teacher increases. This does not include any monies that we receive from the county for capital improvement. Okay, so I'm just going to go through each one of these. Once again, we're going to talk about people, services, and mandates. So let's just talk about people for a second. So in this budget, in this budget, I am proposing a 5 to 6.84% for teachers. As you know, the governor put 5% in his budget. Now, what's interesting, people get very excited when they hear the governor's giving everybody a 5% increase. The governor is, is proposing a 5% increase, but he's only proposing a 5% increase for the, the positions that are allocated in the standards of quality. And so, for example, I gave you, I gave you the document there as well. I think it's the third page again, Christie. Yeah, so just to give you an example of that. So for example, let's talk about kindergarten teachers. And that's down at the bottom. So this year, the governor is funding 12 kindergarten teachers for us. Well, we have, we have 18 kindergarten teachers. We try to keep our kindergarten classroom small because right now there's not a paraprofessional in there to assist with the learning in the classrooms. Next year, the governor's budget is proposing only to fund 11.98 of those positions. So that leaves us the locality to figure out how we're going to funding, funds the six other positions, right? So the 5% that he provides us is only going to be for the positions that his budget is proposing. So are out of the standards of quality. So for those 11 positions, 11.98, we get the 5%. We do not get the amount of funding for the other six positions plus the 5% that we'll need to pay them. Okay, and that's just for people that are not as familiar about standards of quality. There are some other ones here that I think are really interesting for folks. The other thing, one is about elementary principals. Right now he funds, the, but his budget funds 5.01. The, the State, State Department considers elementary school to be K7, not K5. Our elementary schools are K5. So that would mean that only five administrators, K7, are funded. Well, we have six administrators in K7, right? So that's another area where it doesn't seem to make sense. And then over in, if you look on the back page, special education. Special education, I told you that there were 600, about 630 students. So special education teachers right now at the elementary level, and once again, that's K7. The funding is there for, for next year, it's going to be 29.3 positions. And for secondary, it's only going to be 19.7 positions. And I told you, we have 57 positions currently. We need 57 positions. And then for paraprofessionals, the funding is, I always have to ask Christie, where the, how many?
7.89.
There's 7.8, not, 798, 7.99 for next year. And how many special education paraprofessionals do we have, Christie?
Approximately 52.
Approximately 52. So that means for all of those positions, plus the 5% for them, we have to find the funding from somewhere. We as a locality have to figure that out, okay? So what I'm also proposing, the 5% is the base, and then it goes up to 6.84. And the reason that is, is because the longer that our teachers are here, we call it the loyalty factor that their raise is higher. We like to increase the teacher base salary to 52, to 50. Right now it's at $50,000, which is right at, you know, it's, we're right in the middle. I will tell you that many of our neighboring school districts are raising their teacher salaries pretty significantly. I know that, Henrico is one that's come out with 10% increase for teachers. I know Richmond's coming out at 8% plus. I know that many of you probably have seen the bonuses that they're giving. You can get up to $18,000 to go to Richmond schools. There's just a lot of money being thrown at teachers right now because we're all competing for the same teachers. We do have a teacher licensure partnership that Ms. Branch has been working on to start growing some of our own. I'm very appreciative of that, and that's in this budget. And here's some of the positions, additional positions that we can include it in this budget. Now, you'll, you'll not see some of the ones that I had talked to you about previously. So these are on the teacher scale, the reading specialist, an additional reading specialist, an additional early learning teacher, an additional EL teacher, a behavioral specialist, the pathways teachers, because remember, we wanted to expand pathways. We know that we have teacher, students that are not doing well in the traditional classrooms. And so we're going to, we're doing a complete overhaul of the pathways program. We'd like to put some more fully licensed teachers at pathways so we can house students there and have them learn at the school. And then our family engagement specialist, we would like to move that position partly out of Title I so that she can serve across the school district. Those are all the, on the teacher scale. The other employees that are on the United Pay Plan or the United Pay Scale, and then the transportation, it will be a 5% increase. We'd also like to complete the compensation study. This is phase three of that. And if you look at the second document that you have there, you will remember that Ms. Fleming broke that down for you, and you can see what these things cost us. The original budget is there in the middle and the cost is associated with it. So to complete, complete the compensation study, it's $284,997. And then the public hearing is there on the right. So those are the new numbers on there on the right, if you have questions about any of these specifically. We'd like to move the paraprofessionals to grade D. Currently they're on grade B. We do believe our paraprofessionals are instructional personnel, and we want to move them to be more competitive across this region. We'd like to move the starting rent wage to 1285, which is, you know, you know, the minimum wage is rising. We'd like to make sure that we're being competitive in that area as well. And under this, we would like to add kindergarten paras, one for every two classrooms, an early learning para, and a social worker. Now, we had three social workers in the original budget, and we are, we are pairing that back. We worked with Dr. Joyner, we're pairing that back to at least one more social worker for the upcoming school year. And then the other things that have to do with people that are in this budget, health insurance, no increase. Currently you as a board provide over $6 million for health insurance. We do have to provide that, but you do provide that at, this year will be no increase to our employees. Sometimes when they get a raise, it goes away quite quickly when you have to add the health insurance cost to it. We are keeping the site-based substitutes. We're providing course reimbursement beyond new teachers for this upcoming year. And the teacher license partnership was so good, we put it in there twice. So I want to make sure that we saw it there twice. And then the positions we're putting, we'd like to add an SRO so that all of our schools will have an SRO and add an additional SSO that we would like to house over at Historic South Side, where we currently allow Rivermont to rent from us. We have the adult GED program, but we also have pathways there. And we do need to think about safety for employees that are working over there. So that's everything in the budget that has to do with people. When it comes to services, here's some of the costs that are in this budget relative to services. We do anticipate seeing an increase in diesel fuel. And we put an increase of 10% for utilities. Right now for both of those areas, we think that we'll exceed this year what we even budgeted for this year. It's really kind of a moving target, so it's kind of hard to figure out where it's going to land. But we're just trying to be overly conservative. Our facilities are aging, and so a lot of the costs that are in the budget currently have to do with maintaining our facilities and making certain that they're great places to work and to learn. Here's some of the contracts that we have currently that are in this budget. Service solutions, right now we're paying them about $1 million. We're looking at, long-term, we're looking at a different kind of plan for that. Mr. Walters is working on that. Building maintenance, $554,000, these are contracts we have for building maintenance. We collapsed some positions last year to partner with a professional landscape service. So that's going to cost us about $200,000. I think this to me was a great investment. I think our grounds look really great. And then the water testing, which is required, it's about $70,000. Some of the programs that we're offering our young people, all of our regional programs are seeing increases this year. Maggie Walker, ARGs, and Code RBA, and Rowanty. We pay about, about $850,000 right now for our students to attend Rowanty. I'm very happy about that. We do have the highest attendance or the highest participation at that school currently. I had taught you before about pathways expansion. And that would be so that we can house more children, or more students at pathways. Our gifted and talented expansion, I'm very excited about that, that we've done this year with the music and the arts. And then early learning, Ms. Brooks presented to you recently about the early learning expansion. And then we will have that in all of our elementary schools this year. I'm very excited about that, something we've talked about for a very long time. So some of our mandates, just, once again, I just want to reference the standards of quality. You know, what they allocate is never what we need. And I think that one of the things the superintendent's group has been very vocal about is to eliminate that cap and make it be about the things that we actually need. And, because I don't know how they come up with these figures and how they determine, you know, there was a time when every school didn't have a principal, you know, according to the standards of quality. So I don't know how they figure this out. But just to give you a sense of it, we have 698 positions and only 419 of those are funded currently. So anything beyond that, we've got to figure out the funding and the raise for. And we're going to talk about grants in just a minute, and it's the same with grants. Federal funds, just so you know, we have to maintain, there's got to be a maintenance of effort. That means we've got to maintain the, the effort that we're putting into the work that we're doing. You can't supplant, we can't go in and say, I'd like to now let this grant take over what we're doing. And so there's, there's a lot of mandates around federal funds. And we have to make certain that we're providing differentiated support for Title I schools. So while everybody loves to have reading specialists, math specialists, and the like, we really have to do that annual needs assessment and look at that plan and determine where people need to be deployed. And you should see a difference in Title I schools than you see in any other school. And then others, health insurance, we are mandated to provide health insurance, just to remind you how much you're paying currently. And then the Virginia Code, which is interesting to me. One of the things about the Virginia Code is, you know, they mandate things like, you know, planning and class size. And class size is really interesting to me because they'll say you can have up to 30 kids in a classroom, right? But they're not taking into account, you know, what's happening in that classroom or what the needs of the students are in that classroom, or what the demands on the teacher are in that classroom. And so we are trying to be more realistic about that versus say, yes, we can have up to that. But it doesn't make sense to have 30 large students, you know, older students in a classroom. And it's much more conducive to learning if we can have smaller class sizes, like we do at the K through 12, K through three levels. All right. So here's some of the, these are the proposed revenues for just the operating fund. And you can see what the budget was for fiscal year '23. The county transfer last year was $15.9 million. And based on these changes that we've just made, we are proposing $17.1 million. So now, instead of the $2.8 million, we are asking for $1.1 million. Okay? You can see the, the change in the, the local, the state funding, there's a change of $1.6 million. We, we anticipate a change in sales tax to be about $256,000. We get reimbursement for Medicaid, we think that'll be $5,000 we'll receive. In our federal funds, we think $5,000. So all total, we think there'll be an additional $3.1 million if we receive the $1.1 million from the county that we're requesting. Just to give you a sense of what this looks like in, in the larger picture, as you can see from the state, the largest percentage of our money comes from the state at 69%. The thing about state funding, though, is this, the better you do, the less money you get. The state does, so that they reward you by taking away funding for things because the, the need's not there. Case in point, you know, our math, for example, they put math specialists in the budget. And we were very excited about having math specialists be funded for us, but we didn't receive the funding because they were only for the bottom 10% of schools in the state. So that's just one example, but there are quite a lot. The county transfer is about 30% of our budget. So whatever the state doesn't fund, we have to lean on the county. We cannot generate revenue, we cannot carry money over from year to year without the county's approval. Typically, that money goes into capital improvement anyway. And we, so the bottom line is, we have to lean on the county to assist us in that effort. And as you can see, we get a very, very small percentage from federal, which, you know, is interesting. It's, it's about 1% and less than 1% from local funding. And then this is the entire picture, just to give you a sense, because we're categorically funded, which means that how we're funded, the money has to be spent exactly the way that it's, it's funded to us. So 70% of our budget, or $40 million, goes to instruction. And then after that, it is maintenance. It's almost $13 million goes to, excuse me, it's not $13 million. It is, $7 million is in maintenance currently and growing. I will say that that budget is continuing to grow. And then after that, it's almost $4 million is in transportation. Now, transportation is something we are not required to provide, but yet we put $4 million into it. And a lot, I will just say to you that a lot of school divisions are looking at more creative ways because we're losing bus drivers and trying to figure out how they're going to do it. We were looking over the break, and we saw some are like expanding their walking routes and things like, things that we can't do. But look how expensive it's getting for us. Then you can see that next would be technology at $2.6 million, administration at 3.5, excuse me, at one, almost $2 million, and then $1.4 million for attendance and health. And that's the entire budget at $56.9 million. This is just the operating budget. I'll pause right there because that's just the operating, before I go into the other funds. Is there anything you'd want to ask about, about the operating funds? Or anything you want to make a comment about before I go into like the other funds, like federal funds and the like? And we can do it at the end as well, I just didn't know if you had something right now.
Questions or explanations?
This is what you've already seen, that was the part you'd already seen.
And I know from the Virginia School Board Association perspective, we have continued, when we go to the lobbying events, we talk about especially those SOQ positions. I know that, you know, we went and talked to several legislatures about that. And then, and I don't know if you, do y'all talk about that on the superintendent end?
We did.
There seems to be no movement for them to be looking at that, and that just blows my mind.
Jay Mark is doing a, a study on the funding formula.
Which should be out in June, but that's probably not going to change for this, but yes. They have asked for a study to be done so that they can see what, I guess, the difference that it would make and things like that, but yeah. Maybe that makes us feel better because it's being studied.
Up here knows this, but a lot of the legislatures don't even realize that they're not funding it. We had that conversation face to face with the legislature, who got all excited that it might be 7% instead of 5%. We were like, hold on, we can't afford the 5%.
That's right.
And they did not understand that they're not funding all of the response. It's, it's amazing.
Yes. And, you know, unlike others, some schools, districts do get additional monies, you know, for school improvement and things like that that we do not get. So they have funding from other sources, but yeah. Okay, I'll go on. So now I'm just going to show you the remaining funds that are in our budget for the upcoming school year. So textbooks, and each of these will provide you with the beginning balance and, and then where, where we, where we propose to end up at the end of this fiscal year '24. You know that textbooks have to be spent on textbooks, it has to, and you can see there, consumables, e-textbooks, software, and any adoptions that we have done. We do anticipate to be close to $1 million starting there this school year. But we do also spend, expect to expend about $913,000 of that and end up with about $609,000 in the textbook fund. That is a fund that can be carried over from year to year. The school nutrition fund, you do, you do also know that that is a standalone budget, but we do help to support her, that budget whenever necessary. And this does include federal, state, and local funding. Starting the year projecting, that will, she'll start with about a budget of $561,000 and then revenue of $2.5 million. And then the year with $759,000, which was, is pretty heavy, I mean, healthy. I will say that, you know, once again, our students currently are receiving free and, excuse me, free breakfast and lunch, which I think has been great, I don't know how long we're going to be able to maintain that. But it's been great for us to be able to afford that to our families. Our CARES fund, we don't project there to be anything there because everything's kind of been allocated out to projects. We do have several of the CARES projects that are still going on. All of this is going to be contingent upon what comes in, when the labor, you know, takes place. A lot of summer projects are going on, but this is about where we are currently with our CARES projects. And we shared that with you at the last meeting as well. But all of the funny, funds need to be spent by September next year.
Of 2024?
Yes, September. Obligated, oh, obligated, yeah.
Obligated.
Okay. Just to give you a sense of what's currently in fiscal year '24 for, in this, in this CARES funding, we still have a director position in there. We had, well, right now, we only have one intern in there. Yeah. And that's the one at Denwitty Elementary School. A floating nurse, student services support at Denwitty High School, working primarily with our seniors. The Southside electrical and mechanical work that's being done over there, or will be done over there. Putting a generator in at the middle school because that is our technology hub. Our HVAC replacements at Sunnyside, Denwitty, Denwitty, Middle, and Midway. And then our summer learning and remediation programs. So school capital, and a lot of this, it seems like, well, that sounds like a lot of money, $3.6 million. But a lot of this has to do with projects that are already allocated, or there aren't, yeah, already allocated. And, and so projects like the work that we're doing at Southside. Is this, we also have the HVAC from Southside in this one, or no? Not this one, okay. Lot of the, larger, lot of the large capital projects and lot of the, lot of the CARES projects that we had working. You can see that we're asking for another $150,000. We have large capital, small capital. I'm getting ready to show you the slide that shows you large capital, small capital. We, we do anticipate spending about $5.2 million in capital fund and with a remaining balance of $1.7 million. Here's some of our large capital projects that we're considering currently. Restaurant renovations for Southside, we've invested a lot of money in Southside, doing some lighting upgrades there that are necessary, fire alarm replacement at Southside. You know about the envelope study that we need to do at Denwitty Elementary School, and that is to repair, repair the soffit, replacing five buses, the chiller replacement at H, Historic Southside. We do have a turf field in there currently. And then the electrical upgrades to Sunnyside, because what we found out was, once we proposed the HVAC system for Sunnyside, that the electrical system could not contain it. It cannot run the HVAC system. So before we can do anything with the HVAC system, we have to do an electrical upgrade to the school. So, and then I put, we have middle school renovations there, we're looking, currently looking at that. We are looking, first of all, for programming is one problem. A lot of renovations are necessary in the older section of the building. We also have some space issues that we need to tackle. In the small capital, we're doing some cafeteria equipment upgrades. We're doing some replacements to our trucks and vans and maintenance and in transportation. The gym floor refinishing and adding some security cameras. That $150,000 goes very quickly. So here's some of our school grants funds, and this is an area where we really got to spend some time in. We have a lot of positions that are in Title I and Title 6B. And I think there are positions also in the preschool grant, yes, and PALS. And so what happens, though, is when you start to provide people with increases, the money typically doesn't change, as you just heard Ms. Wolfick talk about. So then, but then the benefits and the cost of the employee does change, right, for every year. So it's going to eventually max out. And then we'll have to figure out as a school division, like, how are we going to finance those people that are inside that grant? And I think before, the positions like in Title I were, there was quite a, quite a few that were in there. So we do anticipate, starting the year with about $100,000, and we anticipate receiving about $3.2 million from federal, state, and other revenues. But we're going to spend 3.4, once again, I said, a lot of this is positions in these grants that have been currently in place for a long time. This is our debt service. And I asked Kristy to remind me today about the debt service piece of it. So as you see here, a lot of the debt service has to do with our schools that we're still paying for as well as other projects that the county, at our schools that our county has financed in our name. So, you know, sometimes the county is, they do, they've been great partners, but sometimes when they're showing you that dollar bill, and that dollar bill looks like it's a lot of money coming out of that dollar bill, a lot of it is the debt service part of it because of the schools, especially the high school, Sutherland Elementary School, as well as, you know, I think there have been renovations. I think the, you know, any of the renovations that they've done as well is in here. And they continue, Kristy also reminded me today that they continue to pay at the same rate, even though the amount of payment changes. So they're hoping to pay it off sooner. Here's a summary of all funds, $7 million. We expect to receive about $75 million in revenues. Expenditures about $76.8 million with an ending balance of $5.4 million. And this is what it looks like for all of the total revenues. So you can see for the school operating fund, and that's the one I said, you get, get the money from the state department as well as the locality. That's about 75% of our, that's about 75% of our overall budget, is that's where the money comes from. And then beyond that, you see that we did have about 7.5% of our budget is CARES funding, which will go away after next year. It's been very nice to have that funding. We've been able to do a lot of projects, a lot of things we wouldn't necessarily have been able to do. Then you see beyond that, our school grants fund is at 4.4% of that, $76.5 million. School capital projects fund is at 4.3% of that budget. And then school nutrition fund is 3.4, debt service is 5.2, and then finally, the textbook fund is 0.7%. And then expenditures, the money we spend, 73% of our budget is the school operating, and that's a total of $78 million. And that is, 73% of it is from, is the school operating fund. And then beyond that would be 7.4% is in the CARES fund, 6.7% is the school capital projects. And then we have, school grants fund is 4.4%, debt service fund 4.3%, school nutrition 3%, and then 1.2% is in textbooks. All right. So any question, that's a lot, that's a lot of information. Questions or comments about that, the other funds or the operating fund? Are any more specific, Kristy has all the notes with her as well. If you'd like to ask anything specific, we'd be happy to answer those questions for you. Or we have the, I have my strategic advisors here with me this evening. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm just concerned about, and I think we've talked about this before, that we have those, the ones, those positions that we feel that are critical to this time coming out of the pandemic.
Correct.
And that we have those in, and we'll be able to fund them as opposed to others.
And that did come out when we were traveling to the schools to talk about. I mean, that was one of the things we heard loud and clear from the teachers about the support that they need in the schools. So as you can see, the positions that we pulled back on are, all the positions really are about positions to support teachers and people in schools. And also to expand programs that help to, you know, address behaviors of young people, provide them a non-traditional place to learn if they can learn in the traditional setting, and/or to provide mental health supports and other kinds of supports in the classroom. So we've tried to really focus on that.
And also, you mentioned the expansion down at the other, our other programs.
Pathway, oh, yeah. And, and the early learning, which is critical because we all know that what happens in the first five years is critical. So we got to front load the success of kids too. We know that that's very important, yeah.
As I understand the slide, right, the expenditures.
Oh, this one?
Okay, so it's 78 means expenditures, and what was our revenue?
It was less.
76.
Okay, so we're outspending our revenue, that's something to be cautious of, I guess. Definitely in the future.
Yeah, we have, we have a large beginning balances, and what is happening is our expenditures are going to be more because a lot of these projects, like for capital, are coming, you know, we received the money for it already, but because of timing between, like, most of that work is done in the summer. So the payment form ends up being in the second year a lot of times.
So it shows up in the next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like you have money left over this month, and you get your paycheck, and then you pay all your bills.
But I think what Mr. Snuff is saying, that somebody who would just be looking at this would say, you're spending more than you're bringing in, just like trying to bounce your checkbook.
Yep.
It is, yes, it is. But it is due to those capital projects and the textbook fund. Like, we haven't done any adoptions in the last, you know, since pre-COVID. So we expect to spend more money in the next, this upcoming year for textbooks than we're bringing in in revenue for capital projects as well. So that, that's really offsetting, that, it's not normally.
Just something in the future.
It will not end up in the red, I can assure you.
Yes, no, no, we do not, we do not like red.
No, no, that will not happen.
And, and I, I know the answer to this, but we, we have a end-of-year balance, and we are,
Yes.
what are we targeting to try to get off of our next year's plate by the using of the end-of-year balance?
We're talking about in school operating?
Yes.
Well, we're still kind of working on that because we don't know what our final ABM number is quite yet. In the past few years, we've had very large balances because of... In the past few years, we've had very large balances because of, you know, COVID funds, you know, being spent for things and vacancies, while we've had many vacancies this year as well. But this year, we're still managing utilities as well. I'm trying to project what the utilities are going to look like. I'd like to think that we might would have around $500,000 left to be able to take towards capital projects again, but it's, I'll know more towards the end of this month. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, I know each year, we try to be ready with what we're going to do with the end-of-year money so that we can.
And we have a list. We've been maintaining a list throughout the year as projects have come up. And then what we'll do is sit down and prioritize that list to say, okay, now we know we have this amount of money, these are the priorities we see. And we'll be bringing that back to you as well, but we have a long list.
Yes. And we also are approaching the board of supervisors to do some categorical transfers for us so that we can, which we'll be bringing back to you later this month as a matter of fact, in order to do some projects as well.
Thank you. I think right now, like, everything is so unpredictable. You know, we thought we had funded the right amount for utilities and fuel, and then it just is, it's more than we could imagine. And like in January, we were already, like, utilities, we were at $1.3 million. And last year, I think we spent like $1.8 million for the entire year, so we know we're going to exceed that.
We've exceeded it.
Oh, we've exceeded that. So it's just that, and then fuel, and it's all the, you know, all the different kinds of fuel that we use. And so it's just hard because it's constantly moving, and we've called experts to say, how are you, you know, what do you recommend? Like, called Southside, what do you recommend that we put in the budget? What percentage would you like to put us in, you know, put us in there? Yeah, so it's just, it's always moving.
All right.
Yeah, and we want kids to go places, and we want, you know, to transport families, and, but we are having to kind of look at everything with a really much more conservative lens than we ever have.
And that's another thing that bothers me about state funding, just for people. So we have 4,000 kids, and Hopewell has 4,000 kids, and they transport their kids 12 miles, and we're transporting our kids 502 square miles.
That's correct.
And we get the same amount of money.
Clay Heights is eight points, eight miles they have to transport. We have to transport 507 miles, and we've got kids on the buses for an hour and 10 minutes each way. So we have to rethink about how we use transportation differently in this school system, because that's not right, to have four-year-olds on a bus for an hour and 10 minutes in the morning and an hour and 10 minutes in the afternoon. You can't do it anymore.
All right.
And we have to be able to get drivers. Any other, so this is just for your information this evening and for any public comment over this next few weeks, if people have comment that they'd like to bring back to you all. And hopefully, over the next course of the next couple of weeks, we'll hear more information, and as we do, we can push that out to you so you'll know. I have not heard back from Mr. Massengill yet. Normally, he and I do talk, once they've kind of settled where they think that they're going to be as well. So once I hear back from him, I will also let you know that.
Thank you.
Do we have another meeting scheduled with them? We do not have another meeting scheduled with him. We certainly always can schedule another meeting with him. But they have a meeting that's scheduled, and I'm sure that that'll be their budget meeting that they have. But we'll come back on the 24th or 26th, whatever date that is this month, and to ask for your approval. And hopefully, we have it all by then.
I don't think we'll have the state by then, though, will we?
We're optimistically hoping, but I don't know that we. Actually, what's really interesting is late Friday night, we received new calculation tools for the budget.
Really?
From the State Department. So that's hot off the press, so we have to go, re-go to the back, go to the table and figure things out now.
Do they look papers, not papers?
We don't know. We haven't had a chance to, we've been, we've asked the offices.
I've got that second, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll know that as well. So this could look very different by the time I come back again.
So when we get that money from the state, is we'll show them the next year's budget?
It's for fiscal year '24, starting July 1st. But we really need the locality to assist us, or if not, we have to come back to the table and figure out, how do you find another $1.1 million? I mean, I think we did a really good job finding the $1.7 million that we found and were able to navigate and still get to the needs, the things that we have. There's not a lot of other places to go. When 80% of your budget is personnel, that's the part where it has to happen. So you have to make some hard decisions about what positions you don't fill. That's another popular.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson, for your information.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Questions or comments, if anybody?
No.
Everybody go buy a lottery ticket. And plan to share.
Come in here first and make sure the students get what they need.
Exactly. Are there, is anyone signed up for public comment? Ms. Goson?
I'm signed up.
Pardon me?
When I came in, I wasn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, comments or motion to adjourn?
Any questions from the people who are hanging in here with us?
It matters here, I move that we adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries, and we thank you.